At this time, we will go ahead and call the McDowell County Board of Commissioners into session. We want to welcome everyone to the historic Carson House property. Normally, we would be inside the house, but due to the COVID restrictions and CDC guidelines, we won't go ahead and follow those, so we're meeting outside tonight. And as always, we begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge. So tonight, I'd like to ask Commissioner Brown to listen to the prayer, and Commissioner Green to listen to the pledge. Everybody.
Father Peter, some more? Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all your mighty blessings. We thank you for helping in our strength. We pray for them today for all those around about us that are sick and afflicted with this virus. Father, we pray God that you lay your holy healing hand upon them. Father, we pray God that you be with us in the meeting today, and we pray God that everything that's said or done here today will be good with people. That's why we don't want to make any mistakes in the way we move on, that is not leading the way. Father, we pray God for each and every one that's here, and we pray for us and each and every one of you who are away in our lives. Jesus, amen.
If you'll face the flag, the intention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic and for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Praise you, have you seen? At this time, Commissioners, we have steps and minutes, three sets of minutes before you. Are there any comments, any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve these, as we did.
I'd like Commissioner Green to say.
Say. Okay, discussion. All my favor say aye, aye opposed, aye aye. Okay, approve. We have our agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or deletions by any board member and/or staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I will note that due to a death in her family, this will not be here tonight. I'll briefly touch on some of the information she sent, but it will not probably do justice.
Make sure to remember that Kim's family, in the home of her mother, and that she did wrong. Most prayers the board is turning to attend. Discussion, all my favor say aye, aye opposed, aye aye. Okay, let's go ahead and get started with our first appointment. This will be the Lake James ordinance of the public hearing. And at this time, I'll go ahead and ask Ron to come up, Ron coming up, and pursuant to the general statutes, Madam Clerk, we need a motion to go into this public hearing. Is that correct? Now, this time, I declare the Board of Commissioners in a public hearing setting pursuant to the general statute 153A-323. We have our planning director with us today, Mr. Harman. Good see, sir. Of course, yours.
I'd like to thank you for your opportunity. The planning board would like to present to you the, what we're calling, new block Lake James Protection Ordnance, where we've taken three versions, the '96, the '03, and the 2016, and tried to combine them together. In the body of the ordinance itself, it will denote which development falls under which rule. We changed a few things in there, or tightened some things up. I won't go through them unless specifically asked. And I'll also recognize Vice Chairman Benny Stany and Chris Allison from the planning board here. So there, I'll ask if there are any questions.
Okay. Questions or comments by board members? Chris or Ben, either of y'all want to add, y'all work in this ordinance? Okay.
All right.
The staff, anything else that you have comments?
Not at this point. You do have comments that were made by different entities in the county, and representatives are here. I'm sure to speak to those.
Is anybody present tonight, as long as you wait and see? Is anybody present here tonight that wishes to speak regarding the information contained in the Lake James Protection Ordnance? All right, so come forward to pudge me with my friend, just say your name, and we'll hear you glad.
My name is Todd Bell. I'm president of Lake James Environmental Association, and three things I want to get across. Number one, thank you guys for this. We looked at, along with the Tawson River Keepers, the protective ordinance, and we like the fact that it's combined. We like Ron's efforts in putting this, and Kim's efforts in putting this together, and appreciate the town's protection everybody. Two points we'd like to make. One is enforcement. From an enforcement perspective, we have gotten away with a lot over the years, just because, just like any local government, there's a budget. And the budget that goes into Ron's and Kim's funds to enforce these ordinance is probably pretty tight. If you haven't noticed, if you've been down the lake in the last summer, you've seen the development go crazy. So what we would like to make, the number one comment on, is if there's any way we can help you guys, and maybe getting grant money or something, to focus on enforcement of this ordinance, so that things just don't slip under the cracks anymore. Because we can't afford to do that. We had the luxury 10 years ago when the development wasn't going crazy. Not that, you know, things have happened, but now you see a lot higher density on the lake, and that's an issue, and I think enforcement is number one. One thing we'd like to get across today, the second point we'd like to get across is, we like those protective ordinances, and as an organization, we embraced this a few years ago. In order to protect the lake, you have to protect the entire watershed. And we would like to see some of these same protective ordinances, if in fact, in the best of all worlds, you just apply this movement to the entire watershed. But if we could get things like getting the buffer rules in place, a 50-foot buffer rule for the entire watershed, that makes a difference. I'll just give you an example of why this is important. We test the water every month, and in the summer, we test the waters with E. coli on a weekly basis. We saw on the west end of the lake, a lot of E. coli. In fact, it was unsafe to swim for nets landing in places like that in the summer because of the levels of E. coli. We started testing upriver and saw those same high levels up there. So the point source wasn't the lake, which we're trying to protect, was water drinking water, things like that. Point source was coming down the river. So it's really important, I think, that we look at this as an entire watershed, not this lake. And I know there's a watershed ordinance out there, but some of the buffer rules are smaller and things like that, so we would like you guys to look at two things, enforcement and extending it across the watershed.
Okay, Todd, yeah, you're right. McDowell County has a spirit of growth and continues to grow, and that's the training. Okay, anybody present that wishes to talk or give comment on the Lake James Protection Ordnance? Yes, sir. Come forward, just say your name, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm John Willian. I'm here as a resident of the Arbor at Lake James, and also as a board member of the Arbor at Lake James. Last night, I sent an email to each of the Commissioners regarding our concerns as a board representing our over, almost 400 lot owners in the Arbor, and I just want to make sure that you all received that email. If you didn't, I've got hard copies. Two points I'd like to make as a resident in the Arbor. One is the trash. Included in that email I sent you was, were some photographs of the trash that accumulates each spring after the rains, and it is horrendous. We collected tons and tons of garbage each year. It's not coming from the Arbor at Lake James. It's not coming from Black Forest. It's not coming from the Moose Lodge area. It's coming from upstream, and something needs to be done about that. It should be included in this ordinance, because it's ruining the entire lake, and we're finding TVs, lawn chairs, tires, you name it. You know, we're finding whiskey bottles, water bottles. And it's just, it's getting frustrating, every spring, having to go up and try to clean up the mess. It all seems the land in the Arbor, because we're the first large development coming down the lake, and it's frustrating for myself and my fellow residents to have to go out and pick up all this garbage, so it's, we keep the lake clean for, you know, everybody. The second point is the enforcement. I think, and I believe, more teeth need to be put into the ordinance that has been drafted, which we are, personally, I think, is a great ordinance, but we need to enforce the problems that, you know, exist with new buildings. And there's lots of clear cutting that's occurring, and then you get the runoff of blute in the lake, and, yeah, that's just not the way it's supposed to be. We've got, the sheriff has a boat, the planning department could go out quarterly and, you know, ride the boat around the lake. It's actually a lot easier than driving around. Or the planning department and the inspection department could work together when they're doing the certificate of inspection of, you know, occupancy. They could certainly, you know, go down for those houses built on the waterfront to look and see if all the rules regarding the buffer were, you know, met. So that's, I'd like to, you know, have you consider adding to the, you know, current draft of the ordinance. Does anybody have any questions to answer?
Get email, get email.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you, John. Do we have anybody else present tonight that wishes to speak?
Yes, thank you. My name is Jeff Norwood. I'm on the board also of Lake James Environmental Association. I kind of just want to take a second to amplify what both John and Todd said about the lake. We, again, appreciate everything that you guys have done with the county, not to try and protect the lake. A lot of us have moved into the area, and there's been a lot of development in the lake, from folks that have moved here specifically because of greatness places. You know, this is a unique part of the world, as far as I'm concerned, and it's one that both of us that are concerned about issues like this are committed to try and preserve. One of the things I've noticed is that there are Catawba River rules in place that are state-approved rules, but for some reason, and I don't know the background or the history on this, they stop at Lake James. They don't go above Lake James. And, you know, there's virtually no protection, there's virtually no buffers that they send above Lake James. And this is the kind of thing, I think, that we all, because we all, you know, love this area, and we all are very much interested in keeping it the way it is for our children, our grandchildren, and everything like that, but this is, this is something that we really, I think, need to dedicate some time and some energy and some resources to. Of course, we're very much interested in working with you guys, and I think in that regard, however we can do that, including the Catawba River Keeper, which, you know, we work with closely also. The one other point I wanted to make is, I've talked about E. coli and the fact that we've had some disappointing E. coli measures that are in no other area in the lake this summer. We're not in no other area, but on the western end of the lake. I would say that the other issue, and you guys that have been out in the lake, I'm sure have observed this, is that the western part of the lake isn't nearly as clear, and all other parts of the lake, once you get past Big Island and further down, are much more clear, have way less sediment. You know, some of that can't be helped, of course, because two-thirds of the water volume comes in on the side, the western side of the lake. But with the sediment that comes in, the trash that comes in and everything, what has happened is, when we also take our measurements with regard to algae, we find that the algae levels are multiple times in excess of algae levels anywhere else in the lake. And what's that, and what reason why algae is bad, of course, is that when it eventually settles to the bottom, it depletes the oxygen in the water, depletes the fishing, it basically starts the process of killing the lake. And, you know, and so it's particularly urgent for those of us on the western side of the lake to acknowledge these things, to be thinking long and hard about what we can do at this point to try and improve. And I think that, you know, the Lake James Protection Ordnance is a great first step, but for protecting the lake, we need to do more than just, you know, protect the lake itself. We need to protect the upstream watershed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, sir. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that's here tonight that wishes to say, make comments? Yes, sir. Just come forward, say your name.
Hey, my name is Donnie Suddles, majority owner of Big League Camp. I just wanted to speak tonight about the need of a boat dock for our summer camp down there. I know with the way that the laws and rules are set right now, there's no new boat docks that can be built on that end of the lake. I have college baseball teams come in every year. They're doing canoe and kayak challenges there. They're tying up to the trussel, the trussel columns and everything, trying to do the different activities we're asking them to do, and to me, it's a little bit dangerous. So what I'm asking, I don't know if this is permitted or one-time thing, it's for the McDowell County community too, for the kids. We don't want a boat dock for motor boat access, it's strictly for kayaks or canoes, but I'd like to have the opportunity to build a few down there, just so we can get these kids in and out of the water safely, and be able to do that. And we're looking at alternative motives now, of putting boat docks on wheels and pulleys out there, and pulling them back in, and putting them back out, putting them back in. To me, that could be a moral problem, because of the way that they float and sitting out there in front of boats coming up and down the river. So I'm looking for a safe way to build a boat dock for the kids.
Okay, and Donnie, talk to Ron, make contact with Ron Hall right there. He may punch you and start you in the right direction. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, do we have anybody else that's here tonight that wishes to speak, make comments regarding the ordinance? All right, they're being there. Okay, you have a second to discuss it. All my favor say aye. Okay, all right. Now, Commissioners, you've dropped the ordinance before you. Mr. Whitten, you're requesting action, is that correct?
Yes, sir. If you're ready and willing, you can make, you can vote tonight if you're willing.
Okay. All right, what's question for? Approve the ordinance. Motion approved. Second. Okay, motion approved by Commissioner Green, and Commissioner Brown got second by a hair in front of Commissioner Stevens. All right, further discussion this time. If not, all my favor say aye, aye opposed, aye aye. Madam Clerk, that's a five, unvoted, approved, the combination three into one ordinance. Okay? And I just want to say before I move on, thanks to everybody, to the Lake James Environmental Group for all what you do, and Catawba River Keepers, and those who came out tonight. And rest assured, we, our board believes that this is number one, the best place to live, the best place to work, the best place to raise your families, the best place to retire to. McDowell County has got so much going on right now for the people that live here. It's unbelievable. I'll just say this, and we'll move on, because somebody told me this just the other day. A certain business had someone come in from out of town, and they had an appointment at this business, and so they started walking, they got here early in town, started walking around, just talking to people, and checking downtown, how they do different things, and the business owner told me the next day about the conversation they had with these out-of-town people, and they were blown away by, number one, the friendliness of the people they encountered, and the variety of things that this little county offers. And our board is on record, and we'll say it again, this board wants anybody in every McDowell County that has the same access or the same ability to anything that anybody could get at a big town, but with a small-town atmosphere. And our board believes that, we're working towards that in everything we do, trying to make this the best place it could be for people to live in. So thank you so much for being here tonight, remember, and all the comments we got there. Let's move on to B. This is COVID-19 update. We have Mr. William Keller with us. William, come on up, sir. I always say the board room, but we're welcome to Jubilee Arbor tonight.
Good afternoon. Hope you're doing well. Thanks for the opportunity to present and give you an update on COVID-19. Today, day 211, our emergency operations center being activated for the COVID-19 incident. This continues to be an ongoing incident, which our team, in collaboration with public health and other community agencies, continue to address. As of today at noon, we have 15,219 tests conducted in McDowell County for COVID-19, 14,000, 14,054 negative tests, and we released 22 new positives today for a total positive count of 1,047. We have 118 tests pending as of noon, and of the 1,047 cases, 89 of those are active. Do have some encouraging trends that, once again, the last several weeks has been rough. Unfortunately, we've seen the spike once again after the holiday weekend, back in Labor Day. That is consistent with what we've seen after Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and unfortunately, we've seen the spike again after Labor Day. But our positivity rate since the beginning, looking back, is 6.93%. Our goal is to get this under 5% and maintain a positivity rate at that level or continue to decrease it. So we still have work to do, but once again, we are moving in the right direction. When we look at our 14-day positivity rate, that is the rate that is moving on a 14-day scale, currently at 5.14%, another encouraging trend that we're seeing. We were above 10% after the Labor Day weekend, but once again, we've got this metric moving in the correct direction. Rolling seven-day average, this looks at the total number of positives, or the average number of positives each day, as it relates to a seven-day rolling average. We did peak the week of October 2nd, but here again, this is another metric that has made the turn, and it's on the way downward again, and our rolling day seven-day average was 7.86 new positives per day. The highest that we've seen this is back July 31st through August 7th, when we were at 14 new positives per day. Active positives at weekend, another metric headed in the right direction, and we look at these metrics on not only a daily basis, but also a weekly basis, and then looking at them from month to month. Once again, we are starting to move in the right direction there. We had our second highest week with regards to testing last week. Several driving factors, long-term care facilities that we're testing, congregant living, as well as an increased number of individuals coming through our community drive-throughs. Really proud, McDowell is one of the few counties in western North Carolina that has continuously offered free COVID-19 testing. This makes a big difference for our unemployed, or, I'm sorry, uninsured workers, specifically in our long-term care facilities, as well as all of our citizens to be able to have access to free COVID-19 testing, to lead the strategy of public health, which is conducting the testing, doing the surveillance, or the contact tracing, and then making sure these individuals are in quarantine or isolation to contain the outbreak or further spread of this virus. Total new positives by month, for the month of September, we were down, total positives 176. We were the highest in July, 292. As I said, we had our second highest week, we conducted 1,281 tests last week in McDowell County. When we look at our new positives by age group, it's important to understand where the new positives, what age group it's being driven in, and once again, while we've seen spikes in all age groups after the Labor Day weekend, this metric has turned, and we're on downward trend across all of the age groups. Hospitalization rate county-wide is 7.74%. We have a number of individuals that continue to remain gravely ill after being diagnosed with this virus and having long-term complications. Mortality rate is 2.87%. When we break out the age group and look at mortality rate in each of those age groups, our highest is in the 80 to 89 years of age. 21% of the individuals who have contracted COVID in that age group have passed away.
Say 21%.
21% in the 80 to 89 years of age. Currently have no fatalities or no fatal cases under the age of 50. Long-term care updates, our outbreak at Cedar Brook Residential is currently running the 16th, it's on day 16 of the 28-day cycle. For congregant care or long-term care facilities, an outbreak is defined as two or more cases, and they must run a 28-day cycle without new positives before that outbreak is declared over. However, we've worked that outbreak a total of 42 days, and we're on the second cycle, day 16. Auto Care of Marion currently has 17 residents that are positive, nine staff members. We continue to assist them with mass testing on a weekly and sometimes twice a week basis. They got a new positive today, so they're back to day one of the 28-day cycle. Total days and outbreak is 19. We have two outbreaks in congregant living, marriage correctional institution, 10 staff members. McDowell detention facility, two staff and two inmates tested positive. From the emergency operations side, when we look at our plan and vision, we are working in conjunction with the state in looking at how the rollout of the vaccine would take place. We have designated a representative from the EOC to be the point of contact with the state with regards to vaccinations for emergency personnel. This is in very early stages of assigning points of contact. More information to come on that. The EOC is supporting board elections operations for the upcoming primary elections, supporting them with personal protection equipment and planning with regards to COVID-19. And in ending, our finance section currently filed four applications with FEMA. These applications are broken out into specific time periods, and each of them contain different amounts of reimbursement requests. We have filed four applications. We have two additional applications that we're processing, and we'll be ready to file soon, but the total amount that has been filed with FEMA in those four applications is $367,300,000. And application four, where we end, it takes us roughly to the middle of June, so gives you an idea for where we are. With that, I'm proud of our team at the emergency operations center, I'm proud of the health department team, these folks literally working around the clock, coordinating with long-term care. It remains our top focus to protect our most vulnerable citizens in a continued response to these ongoing events. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, comments, questions, where are you?
Well, you probably covered this, and I missed it, of the school-age kids, since we're both in school now. Have we seen an increase or steady, or what, in that age group?
We have not. We have not seen an increase in other cases, none of the unoriginal and tied to actual contraction within the school. It's extreme.
That's good.
I would classify the situation as extreme, so very encouraging.
Well, if you've been in the schools, and I'm sure you have, they're taking every precaution in the world.
And I'm not sure if Mark is here, but I just want to commend him and his staff, the amount of planning that they did prior to, we were involved in some of the coordination and cooperation. This county is extremely proud of what Mr. Gary and his team has done. It's really amazing.
William, what was that, I think you gave us a chance of what was that, of the number of COVID-related deaths that came?
We've had a total of 30.
That's total?
That is true.
When I saw where the CDC or WHO did that number out, said that you can take away pre-existing conditions, only 9,000 and something that died from COVID. Is that factual, then?
I can't say that that's factual. I see that. My thing is, is every single person that has died from COVID in this county, all of these death certificates are verified by the health department, as well as the EOC. Our data's correct. If you take 20 and 30-year-olds, you're gonna have a number of deaths. If you take 20 and 30-year-olds, you're going to have a number of vets that has pre-existing conditions, whether it's high blood pressure, high cholesterol, et cetera. So seeing that on social media, I can verify. So I'll pass it on. I can tell you our data is correct in this county. But what I also say is, whether the person has pre-existing conditions or not, and we've seen these individuals or these patients who have passed away, whether it's long-term care or whether it's not, it's just they're outside of the long-term care, they're within our community, they're our citizens. That's someone's mother, father, brother, sister. And COVID came, caused them to become gravely ill and ultimately killed. Whether they had high blood pressure or diabetes. And I've been in this 22 years, and the situations that I've seen in these long-term care facilities, these patients, is one of the saddest things that I've seen. But the individuals who have worked in these long-term care facilities and exhibited the bravery of going in there day in and day out, working in these conditions, these people are to be good. They're our frontline heroes, along with the first responders, law enforcement, and everybody else who continues to work with COVID-positive patients, knowing that they risk their own health and the health of their family. My hat's off to them for what they're doing day in and day out. 211 days of the frontline workers, and there's no end to it.
And you know, William, you hit on it right there by mentioning the healthcare workers. From your perspective, from the job, you and your staff, partnering with the health department, health director, and on down with the school system and every other group, just to watch your operation move and work, do its thing, is amazing, just any day of the week, but much less, how much more so here of pandemic, and you've already got somebody appointed to be your rep for when the vaccine comes out. Proactively moving and thinking and doing, and our board appreciates it. We did, and you're proactive. I'll just say this, I don't mind going record and stating on behalf of our board, we've got the best in the state right here from now camp. We say it all the time, wherever we go, your group is the best in the state. I'd put your group up against anybody in the state of North Carolina, any day of the week. And that's where our whole board appears. William, you want me to comment on your EMS stations, the new ones that went on there? It's on the agenda, but go ahead, just, I know you're excited about it.
Well, if you're talking about talking about it, we'd smile. Anyone who's been to our downtown station knows that we are through the station. It was certainly looking forward to the headquarters station on Barnes Road. They continue to move a substantial amount of dirt. I actually talked to the architect today, and so far, no major hiccups with the grading. They haven't encountered a large amount of rock, which is certainly good news for the grading operation. But they continue to move along. The weather has hindered it a little bit, of course. Five inches of rain this weekend can cause a little bit of a delay, but the north station on 221 North, just north in the Hakenz intersection, they continue to progress along very rapidly. That station is starting to take shape. If you've been by, the ambulance bay has shape to it, has a roof on it now, but things are moving in the right direction. This is a win-win for all of the county's citizens, whether you're from Turkey Cove or whether you're from Lake James, all the way down into Glenwood and Sherwood. The four-base setup is going to improve our response times, get us to these critical patients faster, and ultimately, we affect outcomes back there. Appreciate the board's support, the county manager and Mr. Oyster's support, one big team working on these two largest projects in the midst of COVID, but it is nice to be able to see a smile.
That revest is about done. I mean, I ran by there once a week, that revest is about done. Let's go ahead and handle out of the under the old business while we're here, William. This week, go ahead, this needs emergency services building update, and while we're talking about it, let's go ahead and update that.
Mr. Keller did a great job updating actual status of the facilities. And if you haven't seen either locations, if they're groundbreaking, so I'd encourage you to go give a drive-by soon. There's been a lot of change, both. The one thing I will, there is an action item perhaps on the Barnes Road site where the headquarters is under construction. That site is outside of the city limits. The city limits is actually on the other side of Barnes Road, as well as the former Spectrum Building, now Nevo Crossing. But this site is outside city limits, and it may sound unusual for a county manager to advocate for a county building to the annex, but in this instance, it would be beneficial for the initial tap fees that would be charged there quite a bit lower once for a property that's inside the city limits versus out. And then, once property's inside the city, the monthly charges are about a third lower than would be otherwise. Have some information in your packet about property description, et cetera, but there is no negative aspect to being inside the city. There is the benefit of the utility cost. If you decide not to request petition, then there's no harm to file except for increased costs. That would be it. Just an option.
What's the cost of the tap? What's the tap fee?
Don't have it for you.
I think it'd be a good gesture for us to ask the city to waive that tap fee, the annex that just that property in. If we're going to do it, we request that.
We could do that. We could transmit that officially. Board would like officially request the tap fee waived.
I'd call this question down to the board. All right. Most prayers are forward. Is there a motion?
Don't say this to mine. Lowly with the county manager, request this petition. I say it.
That, was there? Mr. Green, was that also included, the request to waive the tap fee, the city? You didn't put it there, but I know you did.
I would ask if that was included.
Okay. All right. No discussion?
The most tap fees were up, William. We're still going to go.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye. You opposed, like so. Okay. Thank you, William. Let's move to our next item on the appointment schedule tonight, the agenda. We have School Resource Officer program update. Always get to do is we get, here we've got grants for SROs or every one term, and we have our esteemed sheriff with us, and we have Mr. Terry Frank with us tonight. We're at the school board, because the school board actually is in session at what time, Terry?
6:30.
6:30. So Terry's come on down to give support or information. Terry, you want to, with the sheriff right here?
So I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. William, kind of segue right into where we're going, comment on the school board, the superintendent. And let me echo you, Chairman Martin. I've got no doubt, none whatsoever, we've got the best staff, and William Keller is his crew, the EOC, in the state of North Carolina. And I challenge outside the state of North Carolina's way.
I agree. I would say you're the best commissioner of North Carolina. It's a good thought, but we agree with that, too.
I tell you, it's a true, true blessing to have the support we've got from this crew, as well as the U.S. Commissioners, and allowing them, his crew, to do what they do. But tonight, tonight, I especially wanted to try to get together, and I asked Superintendent Garrett, who got held up on another meeting, but also Chairman Terry Frank from McDowell County School Board here tonight. You know, we started, we tried to do this back in April. So let me, let me picture and bring it to your attention. You know, we were talking with the county manager back in April, doing this, and COVID smacked us in the face and put some restrictions on us, so we're here tonight. You're going to notice in a presentation here that it's dated April. I didn't want to change that, because that's when this come about, as far as this recognition. But I wanted to publicly come forward with this board and members of our community to say thank you to the McDowell County School and Superintendent Garrett, and to you all, the men and ladies of our McDowell County Board of Commissioners. Through the partnerships throughout years with this group of people, we have been able to improve a safer environment for our children to learn and for our teachers to teach. And it's hard to go anywhere and find such a collaboration that we have here in McDowell County. And I know there's other agencies that will echo that, and that proves here to be one of the best I've ever been part of. And in my discussions with other sheriffs across the state of North Carolina, I can tell you that there are many private conversations where they whisper in my ear and say, "You have no idea how lucky you are, where you're at, to have those relationships." I hear you talking about it. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you, and I do know, not how lucky we are, but how blessed we are to have those relationships. The School Resource Officers we have in different schools throughout the county, it's not that we just decided one day, "I'm School Resource Officer." This is not an easy task to achieve. Whenever you're talking about funding law enforcement officers, you're talking about funding salaries, benefits, equipment, which is a heavy expense to any agency, when you're talking about the type of equipment that we use, and allowing a place for that person to work. McDowell County Schools has not only extended their hand, but they have had the initiative to look for and search for grant funding opportunities that were allowed for the schools to enhance school safety. And I was very pleased to be on the receiving end on two years in a row of the phone call from the superintendent to say, "Hey, we're thinking about applying for some of these grants. Let me tell you about them." All right? I'm not getting the grant opportunity sent to me. He is. He and the board are aware of these grant opportunities, and they extend the offer to us. How do you feel about this? Would you like to partner in doing this? And of course, I talked with you all, I talked with the county manager, as far as how real can we give it to them? Because at the end of the day, we're sure going to need to spend a little bit of money, and thanks to these particular grants, it is a little bit of money when you're looking at what we give. And the school system and the grant funding has provided the majority of our funding for these jobs. And I can tell you, and currently, I'm happy to say we've got the coverage at seven schools in the McDowell County primary jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Office. We have those schools covered. We have those schools covered. We've also been able to add additional coverage as far as two people to that McDowell High School, which is huge, the number of people that we have attended at High School with the recent addition to the ninth grade at McDowell High School. That is a large number of kids, it's a large number of teachers, and it's a large, large area of property for us to be able to cover. So having two additional people there, and two additional jobs there are critical to enhancing the safety, that's what we're along. You know, I can remember a few years ago, sitting in my office as then the chief deputy of McDowell County, and I was having a conversation with then Assistant Superintendent Mark Garrett. And I can remember us having discussions and sharing ideas and thoughts on how to make schools safer, and looking toward the future of how that could be done. And then, I had no doubt of his commitment to providing the safest learning environment to both students and teachers, and he knew that I shared that same commitment. You know, I think we looked up, and not I think, but we did look up and found that 42% of funding to our school resource program is from those grants. And that is a huge relief to the taxpayers from McDowell County. And if we're talking about something that you cannot put a monetary value on, we're talking about making our schools safer, at the end of the day. And we appreciate that. I do realize that the school board has final decision to allow the application of such grants, and they oversee our superintendent, Mark Garrett. I want to tell you tonight that our School Resource Program is successful. Our teachers and our students are safer because of you, your board, and your approval of those applications, those grant applications, and because of you and your board putting trust and support you do into your superintendent, our superintendent, Mark Garrett, and his leadership with his staff throughout this county and throughout these schools. Our relationship has never been better. I appreciate the commitment that you have done, your leadership on that board, and I also appreciate Mark Garrett and what he does for our schools, particularly as it relates to safety, for our teachers and our students. And I just wanted to publicly tell you that. I've got to thank the board. With just about every grant, they're not 100% funded, and that's what we've saw with these grants. So there was still some there to get, and you guys did not, you ladies, lady and men did not hesitate in saying, "We can get it, we can fund it." And I appreciate that. And so tonight, I particularly wanted to give to the chairman of the board and for the board investigation, a certificate of appreciation to your school board, to your commitment, partnership with McDowell County Sheriff's Office towards the safety of our teachers and our students in McDowell County in April, particularly April of 2020, but since then, you say, I know you all know, since then, in the recent months, we have been contacting, got a little bit too many of these grants that the school system reached out and told us it's available, and I did not hesitate applying for it. So excuse me for not shaking your hand, and that is the hardest thing in this world for me to do.
It is.
Because I'd lay a good handshake on you right now and tell you how much we appreciate this, and I hope that you will present this, I'll be coming with you tonight to your meeting, and I hope you'll accept that from us.
I will, sir. Thank you very, very much. Absolutely.
I'll sit this back in here right quick, and then I want to say a quick word. First of all, Mr. Keller, I've worked with you for many, many years as well. I've been in law enforcement for over 40 years myself. Worked with the sheriff, he was nobody, I was nobody. And glad to see you come where he is. I want to say one thing now. Mr. Keller, you hit the elephant gate to talk about our superintendent. He is phenomenal, and he hits the floor running every single day. And there's one thing that the public doesn't really know, all the things that go on behind the scenes to get these grants, but the relationship you have to have between the school board and the county commissioners makes everything possible. We have a joint education committee with Mr. Wood and Mr. Brown, and Mr. Walker, myself, Mr. English, and the Community College. And I'm going to tell you, you would not believe the things that we have been able to accomplish by knowing what each of us need. And when we go in that room for those meetings, there is no "I myself," it's "we," "our." And I'm going to tell you this also. And I'm going to tell you this also, you talk about accolades, but we thank so much of our county commissioners. I know our superintendent tells people all over, they ask me how in the world they do what they do. I don't even talk about our one-on-one funding that you made possible so that we can have computers for everybody down through the second grade. But we submitted you guys for the North Carolina School Boards Association. You guys wanted and deserved to be so. And I'm going to tell you right now, without you guys and the help that you give us, we couldn't do what we do. And I have never seen a situation where our superintendent can walk in the sheriff's department and they're like old friends and same way with the county commissioners and especially the county manager. And show that with you and me there as well. I appreciate you. And I thank you for this award, and I'm sorry Mr. Garrett couldn't be here, but he's got another commitment with the community college, and we'll see him tonight and present this to him, of course, the sheriff will. Thank you all very, very much for everything that you do all the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the time.
Thanks, Sheriff. And here again, just another example of groups and organizations working together to get the job done. We appreciate our school board, our sheriff's department, and McDowell Tech. Terry hit on it right there. We meet once a month, every month, and go back to our respective boards, and all we do is just say, what can we do to make it better? And learning and education for the people without him. Here again, I'll get back to what I said earlier. This board believes one hundred percent that anything you can get in the big city ought to be offered down here, except for marijuana. President, that's not believing. But anyway, I'm just telling you right now, you got to work together. You got to work together to get things done. That's what it's all about, people working together. I mean, you've got, I'll just say, I'll digress a minute. We've got, I see board members of the Carson House over here. You know, they work hard in what they do to make sure this house is functioning, operational, and open to the school. There's the, they don't have it. The school kids at certain grades toured that house, and they learned the history of our county. And hey, I just tell you, if you don't like this place, move. I think it's a pretty good place to live at. Let's move next item, okay? That's enough. I don't want to say too much, get in trouble. Let's go ahead and move to item D. This will be an election update, and we have Kim, of course, keep hearing your prayers for her family, but Asher's going to give that update tonight.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to give, again, this is information that they do a really great job of putting out on social media and through the news outlets in the community. But just a quick, very quick highlight on some important dates that I know they wanted to share tonight. Of course, everyone thinks about November third being the election day, and so that is something we all, if you decide to vote that day, should have circled on your calendar. Voting on that day will leave from six thirty a.m. to seven thirty p.m., and that is at the voters' precinct. And every year, folks go to the early voting sites and say, do I vote here? No, it's, again, where your precinct is. And if people don't know, Board of Elections will certainly let them know where that is, hopefully before they have the election. A few other important dates, the One Stop, also known as the no-excuse absentee voting, that starts on Thursday, October fifteenth. There are two locations for that. One would be the Board of Elections office, that is twenty-four fifty-eight, two twenty-six South. Some people might still call it the old fitness building beside the sauces at the intersection of two twenty-one and two twenty-six on the south side of Marion. There is another location, it's called the Rocket Building on East Main Street in Old Ford. The times are the same at both locations, and I won't go through all those dates, but there is an opportunity from October fifteenth through the thirty-first to vote early. Again, there's no excuse needed, you just need to be appropriately registered. The phone number for folks to call if they have questions, and again, this is put out by Board of Elections staff, they do a great job of that. Again, six five nine zero eight three four. They have very helpful staff that know this time's a hundred as far as information. They will be glad to speak with voters about anything they might want to ask as far as sample ballots, those sorts of things, they can make those available as well. So again, understand the loss from Ms. Welborn, but we're fully staffed to deal with anything they might encounter in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay, comments, questions? All right, there being them, let's move to the next item, and that will be item D on our appointment schedule. This is the property reevaluation update. We have Tim Kane who's overseeing that along with Tammy Wiley, who is the director of that department for the county. So welcome. And Tim, looks like you're starting off, so go right ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to give you guys a progress report. Field visits are continuing to go forward. I think we'll be finished in the spring. We had hoped to finish them before the end of the year, but COVID and protocols have changed and slowed progress, and also the limited interaction with taxpayers. However, we have already started making corrections as a result of those field visits. Many of those changes that we're seeing in the field will be recognized this January first, 2021. Any remaining that are not visited before that time will be recognized in January 2022. The next revaluation is effective January 2023. One of the things that I wanted to say again, because we really haven't spoken about this in here, is the last, they call it measuring list. The last time that we went out and visited our properties in McDowell County was over thirty years ago. Since that time, we've had a, basically a desktop appraisal that was applied to the properties of the county. That's been going on for the last several cycles. Those cycles are typically eight years in length. Last time, the last revaluation was effective 2019, we had a computer revaluation, but we had a limited field visit for the properties that had sold for the thirty months prior to that revaluation date. That limited field visits for the sales resulted in significant change, we're finding significant change in the field. What we've done since then is we've continued to do a huge audit for DOR, for reporting student then, that would tell us what kind of revaluation we would need to do next. That is pointed to the field measure of list that we're already in the process of doing. And so essentially, what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure we have the most accurate data in the system, which will ensure that the property rates and the factors that are applied, whether it's square footage or cost of canopy or concrete or anything else, can actually be extracted from clean data in our system. So that's what we're working on that. Again, the main goal is to make sure that the data is straight. The first phase of that will be seen January first of this coming year. The remainder, which will be a minority of what is left, will be January first of the following year, and that data will be clean then to make sure that the revaluation in 2023 is as accurate as possible.
So basically, if you get the data correct, and that's the goal of what you just stated, does is have the most accurate data in the system. So when you roll around to 2023 for the actual rebound, basically it's done prior to 2023 because you've got the data, the correct data, which may lower value or if there's incorrect data, it may increase the value. But the thing is this, it'd be a fair value.
Exactly.
Right. Okay. And you said that the minority of the remainder of work to be done by the following year. What would you say that would be?
I'd say, I mean, right now, if we continue as we're going right now, we're probably going to have seventy, seventy-five percent done and recorded on January first of this year.
And due to, right?
Yes, sir, and due. But what we're looking at too is we want to do, we want to complete neighborhoods. And so everyone is, everyone within a neighborhood, and there's two hundred plus in the county that's treating the same as they're like, so we're not going to run into a situation where half the neighborhood has been corrected and the other half remains speaking.
Other comments, questions?
I'm curious, what kind of reception you get when you go out in the field?
It's been two different kinds of reception. It's been very good, and it started out very well. The only issue is COVID has kind of thrown the curve off of that. And understanding with some folks don't want to come to the door, some folks don't want us to leave that door hanger. But what we're trying to do, we're wearing masks, we're wearing gloves, we're trying not to make any contact or get close because we're going to cause an unneeded apprehension. So thanks for talking to me, you're very kind and different kind of, you know, why you knock on the door.
It just, and the reason I made the phone, it just goes to show again what kind of folks we've got living in McDowell County.
Absolutely, yeah. I've done this all over the state, and I have been invited to dinner. I have been, I've never had a reception like that before.
Okay, other comments, questions for Tim or Tim? Tim, anything you'll add to?
Well, we've covered it, Tim. We're just appreciative of the board giving us this opportunity to take care of this measured list and everything. All the data that is our goal is to make sure that everything in the system is correct. So values can be saved.
All right, and that's good information that you received in the package along with the income too. So no other questions? We appreciate the work that you both built, and your staff too, hosting with you. So we appreciate it. Tim, thank you for working with me. And y'all have a good evening. Thanks a lot. Okay, this time let's move to item A under Old Business. This will be the Niva Water update, Mr. Wood, yes, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a somewhat narrow Niva Water update. We did have a call from someone to say, what was that about? This is related to a presentation you received a couple of weeks ago from two gentlemen that are here tonight, Mr. Wayne McGlaughlin and David Patino, that are developing a subdivision, again, off seventy east and Niva area. At that meeting, we went over the particulars of the development. Again, you have some of that information again before you, tonight, but as a reminder, that discussion was how the county could possibly help with the extension of utilities, specifically water in that development. You have the map that we looked at a couple of weeks ago of about twenty, twenty-five lots in this preliminary phase that the gentlemen have proposed. We talked about assessments being the method to extend water into the development, and you asked that staff, being Ms. Wiley, Mr. Kane, who were just with us, look at the development, specifically the lots, and get an idea of what the tax value would be based on the extension of water into the development. You have that sent out over the weekend, prepared by Mr. Kane. A really quick summary, the per lot value, essentially right now, again, it's raw land, but something broken out. You'd really be looking at a little over six hundred dollars for your lot value if you were taking away its assess now, if you were breaking it up. Based on the build-out and the development, you would have a value of about seventeen thousand dollars per lot, based on a road, based on water being extended, other utilities, et cetera. So it was just raw land with whatever values there for the forty acres. And once that is developed, you would have a lot value, again, approximately seventeen thousand, and there's some things that could be subjective at the time, wants to reassess, but that's sort of an estimate right now. So the, based on some projections by Mr. Kane, after about thirteen years, you would have potential of forty-seven thousand dollars per year in tax value based on the amount. So everything goes well, as we would hope, of course, with the development, you have a good turnaround in the tax value.
So you're saying that seventeen thousand dollars with the road and the?
And the water. That's anticipating having?
You should have the tax value of forty-seven thousand dollars. Because they submitted the plat and all that to our staff.
Right, the plat, that was prepared by their surveyor, was sent to staff for evaluation. And I don't know if they had a conversation, being Mr. Kane, but he was going out to the site just to get an idea of the neighborhood and the demand and so forth. And so it's an educated guess right now, so.
And what's the tax value right now? Or what's the tax value? Was that the tax value you said around six hundred? Is that per lot, man?
That would be an approximate lot value, six hundred dollars. I will look that up. Had it out last month, but it's a mystery right now. Might take me a few minutes.
Okay, other comments, questions? I'll say this, that we need, and one of the goals of the board has been to have a water filtration plant very near that goal, and to destruct a water filtration plant, because we're getting in water business, this five million dollars, that was probably how many year ago estimate? Joe, that might be predated back to you on that too. But anyway, so we've been told by the state, here again, that we can't take money out of the county general fund to build a water filtration plant or to build water lines. That's come from grant funding and/or revenues generated within your water system. And Terry, you know, you'd be familiar with that too. So we're sort of at an impasse to try to get to the point to where we would eventually have water coming out of that lake out from there without having to buy it from the city. Right now, we have to buy our water from the city and resell it. So I think, I think that you're going from undeveloped to potentially developed, but you're going automatically from six hundred dollars value for a lot to seventeen thousand dollars per lot, correct?
Right, the value now for the forty-one acres is eighty-eight thousand, so you would definitely see an increase based on the lot you're assessing.
So you're going to see a sizable increase just based off the road, and the road has to be done, right, guys, before you're going to put it to watering? Because the engineering firm's not going to put a water system in without a proper road. Is that correct? So everybody's one commissioner, but I'd say from my little take in this, the proposal that you're increasing the value of your lots, which is going to be an increase to your tax revenue you receive, which can in turn, if you do a two hundred thousand dollar project, so fifty thousand dollars in four taxable years, you have your money back. If they went broke and didn't put a single thing down there. Is that right? I think you're right.
Based on his calculations, yes, sir.
Okay. What about, any other comment or questions? And you guys, do y'all have anything, Wayne? Yeah, come on up there, Wayne, stand, because everybody can hear you. It's a little echo.
Like I said, thank you for letting me come up here. And I appreciate the fact that you're not here. I think we need help. Right now, I've been building in Talblandburg, okay? It has some lots down there.
It has some lots down there that have water, uh, you know, so I bought a lot of those and I'm just about to build out. I'm working on five houses in Belmont, that southern region, and I'm working right now. And those houses, well, I'm putting myself some up there showing the floor, the, the forward engine. Um, those houses are 1400, so the house is 7227.
That's going to be your ranch here too, right?
Yeah. What we're wanting to put in is a smaller house, three bedroom, two bath house. You know, something that people can afford, and you've got 200 marks, and it knocks a lot of people out, but with interest rates now, you can keep it around one, probably going to have to be 169. We can keep it right around that up to maybe 189. They can get him a nice, well-built house. But now, with your take and just put those figures, now I know we talked about 25 lots, there's 41,440 rooms there. And what we're going to do, what the surveyor was able to do easily, is pull out this first phase of 25 lots. And we've already got two houses on the, on the road that I want to head up permits on, and we've already started construction there. I've always built a few in one of those. My situation is, when I moved from Burke County, you know, I've got this thing on, like, you know, I've got my footer guy, I've got my block mason, I've got my framing crew, you know, electrician plumber, even there, all that. And I'm kind of in a circle, you know? And what I'm wanting to do, leave Burke, I want to come here and I want to start. But I've got to have, and I've got to be, I'm, I'm looking at some other lots in case and ask, ask, I really want to just build a little bit out, you know, close home, you know, not have to rush it on, all that. But I want you to think about the, the houses, where can we put the houses in? I'm sure we're back and we're going to put them in. Uh, that's going to raise the value, I mean, those are going to be minimum of 169. And I know we'll probably get about 38. So if you figure out that quality, that quality type of space, and not trying to overplay that, that is, you know.
Wayne, the two that you've got started, the two houses you've got started, do they, do they have water, are they, is there a line around, right there on the main road?
Two taps and they run across the road, you got two taps.
You've got water there.
So I've laid a permit, it's done, started. Have y'all looked at that thing, has anybody got it? That's going to be beautiful. I'm not actually sure. I'm going to be close to the rate here, you know, for people that are coming in.
Wayne, you got, you got less than that, Chuck, I can speak to this too, and actually getting in multiple meetings concerning, uh, workforce housing, our board notes, uh, you got what, a 1% vacancy rate, Chuck? Houses go flying off the market under, in that price range, that's your hot price range.
Yeah, two days, I mean, you know, it's, it's crazy. Y'all want to answer anything?
I've got a question. Uh, I mentioned this the last time when, when David was here, and, uh, I know I'm the only one probably that feels the way I feel. But we're being asked to invest $200,000 in a private venture. Understand that later on, we may get our money back, either through revenue from water or from revenue on taxes or whatever. But we are still using taxpayer money to do this. And I'm not comfortable without some kind of guarantee other than land. Now, I've been told that if things go belly up, that we get property. Okay? That's not a guarantee to me for a $200,000 investment of taxpayer money. If I was private, putting up my 200,000, I'd probably feel different about it. I, I'm not against what, what's being proposed to do. But I would like to see some kind of guarantee of the taxpayers' money being put at risk. And we mentioned the last time, the possibility of you guys applying for a bond. Has that been discovered?
Uh, yeah, David mentioned that, yeah.
Have you approached anybody about it?
Okay, let me answer. All right. Uh, one house, one house I put up, it's going to be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cost. Okay, that's not land, that's not part of that thing. One house, a good hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cost. I'm starting two right there, okay? I want you guys to help, okay? Cause I know that's what you do. It kind of bothers me that if I want to put that much money out, that my kids aren't going to, you know, take the chance on it. So whatever you guys decide, I'll put on. Any other questions?
David, this isn't your man.
No, uh, I thought we kind of held over the, uh, that bond part and that sort of thing. It's about the best collateral you can have is, is land, it's not going anywhere. Uh, and, uh, you know, if you're in a predicament and you want to do this water, water filtration, I think it's a win-win for everybody involved here, rather than doing fewer homes and putting the well in and having shared well for the several that you originally thought about doing in the beginning. I think, like I say, I think it's a win-win for all involved in this.
And I, I really considered putting in this wells, putting in well for every three houses, but I heard there was some kind of problem with the wells in that area. But not for me with any of that, so, you know, that kind of, you know, I mean, you deep it back to that, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather have it.
And one question too, before we start, and, and, you know, Lynn, you know, Lynn's right, guys, you know, we've got to make sure.
That's, that's fair, mine.
We've got to make sure we do it right. So, uh, but not for doing it though, and I know Lynn is too, but he's just trying to make sure he can go out and help and justify what we're doing here, um, just like I always saw. Actually, the payback, now talk about that a little bit, on the $200,000, what, what number one is permissible by general statute for any board to do what we're talking about? Is that correct?
Right, so what we talked about in more depth last time with the, with an assessment, essentially what you do is you, you find out the amount of the project, uh, that's after, you know, the engineering, the permitting, the construction, you get a provision.
You need to tell the layer, actually, if they can hear it.
Uh, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I'd like to hear that.
Uh, my thing. But you, you get all the costs, uh, and essentially what you do is you get a, you get an okay and you move forward, you have a hearing and you full steam ahead. You build the, the infrastructure and then you have essentially a second hearing at the end of the project that you then go through and you give, not physically, but you put a lien on each of the parcels at that point. Uh, and so the statute allows you to do that up to 10 years. You see that sometimes, uh, but most, based on the information we've been able to see, uh, they max it out usually about five. It, it's, it's a simple math problem. You're, uh, you're dividing, uh, 200,000 by five, that's $40,000, uh, payment per year. And then you divide that out of how many lots you have, uh, and you assign a payment out of those, uh, out of those lots each year. So, you know, if the gentleman still own it after, you know, each year, after year, after year, they're adding that property cost to, essentially to their taxpayer. There is a difference when property is sold, it is a tax lien, and so that lien has to be paid per closing, with the closing costs. So that would be.
Which at that time, what's that government, does everybody, where is that at?
So, uh, it would depend on the lot, you know, it was between $6,000 to $8,000, how was that called? So that was, again, again, depending on how many are lots from that preliminary phase, but, um.
Are these first two lots part of this plat or something? I see one yes and one no.
Well, they're all, they, they all came out of the same track.
Came out of the same track.
Yeah. And they're, they're right on 70, so those two have access already, so they did come out of the same track.
They wouldn't be calculated because they're.
I was just trying to get it right.
Yeah, they wouldn't be part of this because they already got one.
Got it.
But, yeah, and, and we would, uh, we would, and you can leave it on, but what we would do is first pay, you know, I get lots, so, you know, each, each house in those, you know.
We'd have to set up that, that lien.
So it's free, clear property.
We'll be trying to deal with them now, sit here, so.
That's where you're making it, you're going to make it on one or two. All right, other comments or questions?
Gentlemen, I want, I want you to understand that I'm not against what you're trying to do. I'm just watching out for my taxpayers' money.
Thanks.
Okay?
Uh, Barry's got a question.
The only thing is, and it's what we're saying, what kind of precedence does this set for a future board? We'll be, we'll be leaving here next month, okay? If William Keller comes up and wants to have it developed somewhere and whoever's on that board, I think we pretty well know who's on that board, one or two months, is that, what precedence does that set if we don't, uh, do the same thing for the next developer that comes in?
Well, Barry, you would certainly look at anything just as an individual thing, just because you pass one thing doesn't mean you're going to pass something forever.
Wow, this is the first time we have ever, in my 16 years that we've ever done anything like, that we've been discussed, something like this. 16 years I've been on this board, we've never been approached with it. It, it would be simple to say, yes, do it, but then what is it do? And I agree.
I don't know what you're saying, dude.
You know, yeah, you know.
But it's new territory for everybody because you're just starting this, so these are things that are going to come up. And you're going to have to look at each one of them individually and how it's structured and that sort of thing.
Can we look at each individually as a board under the statute? You have a question. Um, oh, you'd have, just to make sure I'm clear, you'd have a payback in five years for not even including your payment plan, because it, it would accelerate based on the $47,000 per year, based on the tax value they would pay, right? Am I losing?
It is separate. I mean, the 47, again, based on his calculations, that's, you know, one bucket based on, you know, just the tax value. The, the assessment will be in a separate, uh, separate bucket. So it's not counted in, in that. So again, you're getting the tax value, again, based on, you know, the developers, what they want to do there, but, um.
And this subdivision being approved by our staff, correct?
It, it's conditional, my understanding, and he, he will correct me, the, the plat, I think it's sort of a chicken and egg. They need to know from you guys if you're going to allow the public water. If you say no, then they're going to wells and it affects the, the size of the lots. Is that correct?
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, what's Barry's?
I just like that. Just like the time we did. Now, what, what we're doing here, and we're talking about phase one of this operation, which is, again, that's, what, 20 sites?
We've got 25.
25 sites, okay? And we've actually given us the numbers and we looked at that. And based on you having the road in, you know, you're going to have a road in to this, for the water line, you know? And, uh, based on the information that you have done on this, uh, I think the revenue was there for the 10. So, uh, given that, it would be, uh, my position to, to make the motion to be approved.
Okay, then the motion approved, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. And they've already said a road be in place, and then there's water line, there comes your approved value of lots. They go, they do everything, but.
This motion was made for the phase one.
Phase one?
Yeah.
And I will comment, there are, this is sort of the first of many steps, and, uh, if you wanted to condition the next step being based on, uh, the plat being approved, the planning. The planning board have to approve that? Uh, at, at least have staff, if it's not planning board approval on the plat, which based on what we've seen, there doesn't seem to be anything that would affect that. But as well as having the road.
Yeah, that's, that's the, they're, they're going on like 25 lots, it just took time and, and, you know, I don't want to go above what they're going to provide a road and, uh, you know, because that's where our revenue basis is going to be, is going to be on, on that road, uh, and, and our, our tax value is.
I think it just gets, kind of gets the ball rolling, the necessary.
So that's, that's where my motion would be, would be for the phase one.
How soon are you looking at phase two, I should ask that?
14 in the first, hopefully in the first year, things, but you got factors like weather and stuff like that. But, uh, so 25 lots, so let's just say, you know, 18 months or something, so probably realistically two years, the second phase, realistically.
And what we, I'll say this, I want to, I want to say this, you got the, uh, guys that are building the houses as they're going in there, to me, that's a big thing. If this was, uh, a request for somebody who had this land, but had no intent of doing the, they've got the means to build the houses. If they were just doing it without that, it'd be a different situation.
Well, they're, they're investing too much money in.
They're not going to walk away.
You know, they're, they're.
There's plenty of investors, plenty of skills, yeah.
And, and they're providing a need in two ways. Uh, they've been income producing for our water system and they're meeting the needs, housing the needs of people in a market, in a price range, that people can get a good, affordable payment in and have a home for them and their kids to live in.
And employment, people working, buildings, it's a wonderful part.
Okay, any other comments?
I think that's a solid one, that problem is, if it had been like, and I, and I know it's a failed thing, you can't compare it to that, but while it is, where it came in and so forth, it failed, but you're already digging foundations, you're already, that changes the scenario, uh, for me. Now, for future boards, they'll have to deal with that, you know, when it comes, when it comes up, but I think that changes the scenario.
That's really the one. And you got local guys versus outside people. You got, they're not flying people in in helicopters, uh, with a big tent set up in the field saying, here's what you're buying from the air.
That's sunny, that's sunny.
Uh-oh, that's when I'm not supposed to. Is that a meal with it? I think there's some.
One ears in the tent.
All right, let's, let's, you have a question? Oh, in favor say aye.
You can get a second.
Uh, Brenda's second, yeah, she said. Oh, in favor say aye. Aye, you posed last time.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Let's move on to the next item. Let's move on to the next item. This is item B under Old Business Facilities Update. Mr. Whittaker will get started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is primarily focused on an update on the, uh, what was it, Kirksey Funeral Home. Spoke with the, uh, the real estate agent for the sellers via, I guess it was email, uh, Friday and today on a closing date. Uh, the closing date for that property will be, uh, next Wednesday, and so we will make any arrangements that are necessary on, on our end for that, but it's primarily for the seller to prepare documents and so forth. We should take possession that day and of course, we'll be adding the insurance and those sorts of things. We had, uh, Mr. DePoister is here, uh, Mr. DePoister and I, and Chuck Hamrick, and our structural engineer went through the facility about two weeks ago. Did not get an actual formal report on the structural condition, because it was, didn't seem necessary based on the condition being what it is, being very positive. There was an email from the engineer about very minor concerns he had about it and just things that we needed to address, send a closing happen, but nothing out of the ordinary and nothing that he, uh, more importantly, said would cause us to not close on the property. So. nothing that he, more importantly, said would cause us to not close the property. So both he and Mr. Hamrick, again, had very positive comments about the building, and for their recommendation was to move forward with it. So again, after next Wednesday, Mr. Hamrick will be back, I think the week after, with his staff to measure the facility. We were not able to locate blueprints for either the original portion, that was the funeral chapel, which is now the office area, or the addition made in the early 90s. So Mr. Hamrick will measure all of that to have sort of a baseline to go back based on our programming needs for the different uses. Whoever a week, I'm wrapping up the building.
Okay, you know, you hear comments, and I've heard a lot of positive comments on the purpose of that building, the location of that building, and the potential use of that building, and so, things to be really, and that building is going to be paid for with the government finance, so we're excited about that. And there's been discussion about what we're going to see in that building already, and y'all communicate that to Mr. Wick, I'm sure. And so anyway, other comments, questions, other orders? Okay, is that the only building we're going to talk about tonight, Ashley?
Uh, yes, sir.
Are they, what are you talking about, that building beside our county building? I want to talk about that.
Sure.
Yeah, that, you know, we've got a major issue, though, is still parking, and I'd tell you, you've done a great job, dealing with courthouse officials and those that are representative, representative there, that have the parking requests and needs and desires, and so we have a head loss of space once the deck is completed. Get the board up there on deck.
Yes, sir. So the courthouse project, we talked about quite a bit last month, anticipated completion date for that project is still mid-December, and we head towards the final phases of that now. One of the last parts to do work on is the resurfacing of the parking decks on levels one and two. We mentioned again last month that the total spaces in that parking deck will be decreased by about 25 or 30 spots. We ended up with about 45 parking spots. Mr. DePoyster and I communicated with the court officials, and we had requests or requirements, however you want to phrase it, of 55 spaces for about 45 available. So, and that 55 is just state officials from, you know, everyone represented in that facility does not account, does not count any county employees that are down below the deck. So we're currently going through and verifying the numbers with court officials to make sure that everything is accurately reported and so forth, and we'll work through allotments based on, based on the need there. But still, as you can see, 55 is greater than 45, and so there are at least 10 state employees that will be parking beyond what's available in that deck. Again, that does not factor in anyone in the building.
County. So that's, that's an issue and a problem, and this board is, needs to solve problems and make things better. And obviously, my take on that, to help make that problem better, anywhere downtown, to find space in downtown, number one, Marion is wrong, and prices are in that, in your downtown business area. So there's not any current spaces for parking that you could buy a vacant parking lot, or the one that DSS utilizes right now, and that's not for sale. So we purchased that building beside the county building, small, and the board was smart in doing that, because when the board did it, the board was looking long-term at, hey, can we put a county function in that building? And we examined that, and we, it was determined to be cost prohibitive, $300,000 to have that building come up to the level that county government has to go by the requirements given by the state to do that. So it's sort of cost prohibitive, but three people in there for $300,000. So what's our greater name? Parking. And I've had several people that own businesses up there, people have said, why are y'all going to do that building? I said, well, the board and staff, of course, would have had a conversation. So I'm going to begin the conversation tonight. I mean, Ashley talked a lot about it, but formally, from my perspective, is that building places, be bulldozed down, and take a parking, take a parking from top to bottom, all the way down through there, because you got 30, you got 10 spaces above what's requested. Then, that's not in our county people. I mean, they got to walk across, and they walk across the road for a month. You know, we got, we got to look after our county employees, too. I don't want to see them being put out. And so just to get the bar rolling, my take on it is, I would love to see the cost estimates on what would do, what it'd take to demolish that building, and then the cost, to see what it costs to pay from the top of the bottom, and just for my little take. I'm putting it out there. Y'all talk.
I think there's going to have to be some time and love in it, you know, just to tear up the building, you know, there's going to have to be some expenses. And the work done, there may be a lot of fieldwork in there to fill up, to make this thing even possible. Then too, you know, you need to look at how many parking places can this possibly provide, you know, if you're going to pay 200, 150, 200,000 dollars to get the building to move, get 10 parking lots, if you can see they're technically justifiable myself. But if you can show me that, you know, you could probably get 25, 30 parking places there, you know, that would make it more attractive. So I think, as far as, my take on it, the first thing I'd like to see is a study done of what we could accomplish by doing that, and what would bring back to us.
Okay, all right, extra comments? I agree with you. Other comments, questions?
Where it goes on with the EMS business crossroads.
Yeah, stick that parking lot in there too. Yeah, that's going to be a big part that you're able to think that out of.
Anybody else want to add to that?
Nope.
Or Richard? Okay, all right, Ashley, get the estimates, bring back the board.
Sir.
All right, let's go ahead and move to item C, Public Shooting Range Update. We'll go ahead, sir, let's say.
Yes, sir. You have in your packet, I'll be brief, just an update from Mr. Steve Bailey, who's the engineer for Wildlife Resources. He is coming about every two weeks or so to do a site inspection of the, the work that has started about three weeks ago out at the Public Shooting Range off Ashworth Road. Again, you see some pictures, these are a little data now, not that much has changed. The road going from Ashworth Road along the easement the county owns, that has started, again, about three weeks ago. The rain has not helped, of course, but that work by Studdles Grading, who's worked for England Builders, is definitely underway. There will be a construction meeting next week. We are talking with Wildlife Resources about a groundbreaking, hopefully, the week of the 26th of this month. And so we're trying to get some dates as soon as possible, you know, from you and from them, to get that scheduled for another big deal that has happened over the last three or four years, thanks to your dogged pursuit after a lot of delay. But again, it's great to see dirt finally moving there. One thing we are working on with Mr. Hamrick, will be design of a classroom slash office building. We have some basic designs that have been provided by Wildlife, I think for a range they have not, not built yet. And so we've sent that to Mr. Hamrick to look at, see if that's something we could do here. So that, that's a separate bid than what is underway now, but we'll hopefully get that out to do very soon. Questions?
Any comments, questions? All right, it's a good thing, I'll make one statement, I'll spend 250,000 dollars to get 2.5 million dollars to get the project done any day. All right, let's go to that. Next item, that will be new business item A, the Drexel Property Update, Grant Application. Mr. Wick, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Again, quickly on that, the city and county partnered, once that property was received, to remove most of the debris and most of the structure that was at the Drexel area site. There were a few things that could not be accomplished under the first phase, and so city staff has definitely taken the lead on looking for additional grants for further cleanup. They have identified an $800,000 EPA grant. It does require a local match of 40,000. City Council approved 20,000 of that 40,000, and they've asked that you match the remainder. It seems like the grant is a long shot, but it's definitely worth pursuing based on the remaining need.
Where's that coming from?
We are there, for sure. It's been a eyesore in that community for a long time, since the building was demolished and the property owner left town, and said, y'all can have it, and the process has been undertaken to try to get it cleaned up. That'd be a great site at some point, to market for housing slash a multi-use kind of city, so, yep, part of it. Motion approved, say. Discussion, on favor say aye. Opposed last time. Okay, let's go to the next item, item B, under new business, this will be administrative items, and Mr. Wick, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. You just have one item there, that is EMS write-offs.
Okay, comments, questions? On favor, board?
Over to you, Ryan.
Motion approved. The second, second, discussion, on favor say aye. Aye, opposed last time. Okay, let's go to tax matters, item C, under new business. Mr. Wick, go ahead, sir.
Just a few items there. Sent a couple of refunds from your tax department, utilized pretty much.
Okay, comments, questions? What's favor, board?
Approved.
Okay, Mr. Peters, motion approved by Herr and Commissioner Graham. Say. Discussion, on favor say aye. Any opposed last time. Okay, assistant comment? Madam Parker, anybody who has signed up to speak tonight?
Nobody.
Okay, nobody's signed up to speak, so we'll go to the next item, Commissioner's Staff Report of Information Communications. Okay, no commissioners have any items, and staff has no items. Now, let's go to one more exciting topic on the agenda. This will be the historic Carson House update. Now, normally, we would meet inside the Carson House, but here, again, due to COVID, we are meeting outside properly and safely. So, but it is a highlight of the board commissioners every year to come to the Carson House. And so Chuck, you are the chairman of the Carson House Board, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you don't, if you don't mind to come forward and bring him over, it's always good to see Dr. Haney over here. He's been associated with this group for quite a while, and I always look forward to having him here, and always love to hear him give the prayer over the podium.
Doc, I'm asking you to go do the prayer.
Sure. And Chuck, give us a little bit of history. I mean, how many years now has local government been here?
Well, thank you, and congratulations on the good work that you continue to do. This is the 30th year that the county commissioners have met at the historic Carson House. Cheryl reminded me, the first time that we did this was in August, and it was so hot that they moved it, that they moved it to the fall. But I won't do a long version of this, but the county was created in December of 1842, and that following March, the Board of Court and Police and Quarter Sessions met to form, to form McDowell County, to lay out, to lay out the city of Marion. They were called justices of the peace, not Board of Commissioners. They were appointed by the governor, not elected by the people. And the governor was appointed, or really controlled by the general assembly. So until after the Civil War, county commissioners were not, were not appointed. So we're honored to have you here. Let me just say that the assistance that you've given us this year has helped keep us solvent and keep our heads above water. It was really very difficult because we obviously shut down, and that, that assistance is appreciated. We had painted the house and repaired the chimney before this downturn took place, and the assistance that you provided was really of tremendous assistance. So all in this moment.
I'd like to thank you so much for your support here, of the staff and the members and the partners, and this, this great history that we have. I mean, it's nothing like anywhere else. We were so blessed to have it, and it always made me so excited to get all these kids to come out here, and we usually have, you know, 800, at least, children in the fall, about this time of year. And so we just had to change that thing. So I'm excited to tell you that we're launching a new program to get kids back out here safely. I partnered with the Over Mountain Victory Trail, and they've come up with a page of, it's kind of like a scavenger hunt. If they go visit all these different sites that are along the Over Mountain Victory Trail, which seven of them are in McDowell County, they come pick up their materials at the Carson House, they go out in the, in the area with their parents or whoever, they bring back that they've had evidence of going to those places, and they get a patch for their collection. So, you know, I have sent like little videos to the school system, and this has been promotion of focusing on fourth graders to start with, and expand, and try to get more families out here safely, and still visit, and bring more revenue into the camp, which is, which is awesome. But thank you so much, and I'd like to introduce our board members that are here, and you would say, Sheldon Murray, Alice Decker, Debbie Queen, trying to hide back there, and of course, Dr. Jim Haney. But thank you again, and welcome to the hospitality. Anytime, and we're so happy that your, your meetings can be held here, and you're always welcome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the hospitality. The board met out here when the COVID hit for a good while. We appreciate you being so little bit with us. And also, Martha, anything that, anytime the Carson House needs to utilize a county TV channel, feel free to hit the staff, and that'd be great. If y'all run, run, you know, programs in the house on that, that way it gets out to about, what, 9,000, 100, potentially?
We've done that.
So we would be happy to have you use that, free of charge, of course.
Well, thank you so much. You meant most generous, and we really appreciate your support.
Thank you so much for all y'all do. Carson House, exciting place here in McDowell County. Lot goes on. Chuck, and Dr. Haney. Dr. Haney, come forward, sir. Make a few comments, and if you don't mind, bless the people.
Mr. Chairman, we call Haney's feet.
Sir.
It's kind of been a little tradition for us that you pick up the night's meal, so they don't incur that cost.
Okay, Commissioner Peters is making a motion that the county commissioner pick up the meal tonight.
Sure.
Seconded by Commissioner Lynn Gray. Discussion, on favor say aye. Aye, opposed, you don't need it. Okay, good deal. All right, Dr. Haney, who is yours, sir?
Let us pray. The eyes have all weighed upon the old Lord, and thou doest them like we did in Deansville. O Lord God, who calls to give you thanks and praise for the blessings that led you to life, to life and to death. Particularly in this place, we know where it begins, of the great cultural heritage which has been handed down to us through the generations. Grant us the wisdom to distinguish between the good and the bad, and to preserve a little guilt upon all that is good. Now, blessed to us this food, through Christ our Lord.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Haney. Always a pleasure to see you, sir. All right, have we connected all the business now, Mr. Wick?
Yes, sir.
Very much in turn by you. Day of motion adjourned by Commissioner Peters. We have a second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed last time? Me, it's adjourned.